Good afternoon and welcome to the twenty-ninth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. We have no.
Recording in progress.
Do that again. Good afternoon and welcome to the twenty-ninth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Uh, we have no mi- meeting minutes to approve today, so we'll jump straight into the calendar. Uh, special license applications calling agenda item number one. Application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-two from Kools and Catering by Seinublan Inc. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sam Malero, general manager for Kools and Catering by Seinublan.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Sheila. I'm the event coordinator for Kools and Catering by Seinublan and authorized agent.
Thank you very much. Um, why don't you guys just walk us through this, uh, event?
Yeah, so, uh, pretty easy wedding. Um, we have the ballroom and the courtyard, uh, coned off for, uh, liquor use. And, um, yeah, nothing else major about it. Not too many guests as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I notice it's pretty small.
Yep.
It's a wedding reception, right, this one?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Malero, you guys are planning to basically keep it in the ballroom though, but have them the ability to go outside if they want to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll have, um, some of the courtyard furniture out there too for you.
Okay. Okay.
All right, uh, I move we approve agenda item one, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-two is approved. Calling agenda item number two, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-three from Kools and Catering by Seinublan Inc.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Sam Malero, general manager for Kools and Catering by Seinublan.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Sheila Elcano, event coordinator for Seinublan Catering and authorized agent.
Right, thank you. Uh, yeah, please walk us through this event.
So, this event is a first birthday, uh, quite a lot of folks and basically the same setup. We have the courtyard as well as the ballroom, uh, cordoned off, and then we just have one bar on site inside the ballroom.
And for a first birthday, there'll obviously be minors. Uh, what are your security measures for serving alcohol?
So, some of our security measures, um, of course, checking IDs, um, for all, all guests. We also have, will be serving in clear cups, so we can see what drinks, uh, each guest has. And of course, our catering staff and the bartenders will be, uh, keeping an eye on drinks.
You have two security personnel for this?
Yes, sir, two, uh, HPD officers.
Okay, thank you.
You'll be banding at the bar or when you check them when they come in?
We check at the bar, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I move we approve application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-three.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-three is approved. Calling agenda item number three, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-four from Kools and Catering by Seinublan.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Sam Malero, general manager for Kools and Catering by Seinublan.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Sheila Elcano, event coordinator for Kools and Catering by Seinublan and authorized agent.
Thank you. Uh, could you walk us through this event?
So, this event, uh, retirement party, uh, one hundred guests. Uh, and this event as well, we have the same setup. We're including the courtyard with the event as well. And again, just one bar inside the ballroom.
And similar security measures, I assume?
Uh, yes, sir, two, for this one, two HPD officers because there's liquor.
Two, okay.
Should be two.
Commissioners, any other comments, questions, or type of action?
I move we approve agenda item number three, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-four.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-four is approved. Thank you.
Mahalo, you guys have a good weekend.
You too, thank you. Calling agenda item number four, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-seven dash one through, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-seven dash one-two from Tegan Eve LLC.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission, great nation, co-authors, I should appear here behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Could you walk us through these applications?
Uh, excuse me?
Could you walk us through these applications?
Uh, yeah, basically, we have a pin- um, we have a pending, uh, application. That was, I believe, accepted on August of two thousand twenty-two before. It's been, we're just doing the, uh, trying to get the, the specials so that we can initiate, uh, further service for the clientele. And again, we have received the investigator's report and have no additions and comments to their talk.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions, comments, type of action?
So, Mr. Nishiyoka, a couple of questions on your, uh, floor plan. So you have an outside seating area that is part of the licensed space, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, so, um, about how many people are you gonna have seated out there? Do you have, do they, does your client have an idea?
Uh, I, I would say based upon what we're expecting approximately a hundred people a day, as indicated in the investigator's report. I, I can't see more than, uh, you know, about fifteen to twenty people sitting out there. Looking, looking at what the floor, floor plan is as it is right now.
Okay, so on the outside area, what kind of barricades or areas do you have cordoning off your, um, you know, licensed space?
Uh, I'm, unfortunately, I'm not aware of what kind of barricading they have at that point, to be honest. Um, again, this is, uh, not the first time we've come in for a special, so, and we haven't had any problems with the, uh, service in that area.
Okay.
Did you say there's a permanent pending?
Yes.
Do you know the status of that?
It's pending.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair. I mean, it's pending.
So I mean, for me, um, I guess with the, the permanent, right, I mean, I'm gonna have the same kind of question. So if you can find out from your client what they plan to do, or if they're gonna use the outside seating. Um, also, right, with outside seating, right, I mean, if you're gonna have twenty guys out there, at least maybe have your client make sure there's a dedicated person out there. Because if there is really no barricading, uh, it's just, you know, their own lines out there, I'll wanna make sure things are not being passed, okay? Back and forth.
Definitely. Understood.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, I move we approve agenda item four, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-seven dash one through, two-three dash zero-one-four-one-seven dash one-two.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Applications number two-three dash zero-one-four-one-seven dash one through two-three dash zero-one-four-one-seven dash one-two inclusive are approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Please, Commissioner, thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number five, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-two-two from Park Event Services LLC. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioners, Kevin Nicobal and Emmanuel Buckelong. Here on behalf of Park Event Services LLC. To my right is Mr. Jen Par- P-A-R, like, from Park Event Services.
Thank you, gentlemen. Could you just walk us through this event?
Sure. It's a private wedding, uh, happening at Aloha Tower Marketplace, um, for about three hundred fifty people. Uh, happening on the main stage, uh, we have, uh, five security guards as roving, uh, provided by Rain Security. And we will be doing ID checks as well as banning those that are twenty-one.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, type of action?
So I'm just confirming off your floor plan, entrance and exit is on the Aloha Tower peeling side?
It's in the main, uh, the main, uh, stage, which is directly in front of the Aloha Tower itself. Currently, it's where they do the luau.
Okay, and so you're banding and thing, will that be at the bar or will that be at the in and out at the bar?
Yep.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, I move we approve agenda item number five, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-two-two.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-four-two-two is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Calling agenda item number six, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-five-one dash one through application number two-three dash zero-one-four-five-one dash three-zero from Qantas Airways Limited. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Mr. Ry Robert Uyoka on behalf of Qantas Airways. Present to my right, Ms. Carlyn Gorai. She's an airport manager. Uh, first name K A R L L Y and last name G O R A I. We have no changes to the investigator's report. This is for an extension of existing special liquor license for the club lounge at the Honolulu International Airport. We do have a pending Spencer liquor license application filed in November twenty-twenty-two, which is still pending. Oh, we've had no issues with the special liquor license, uh, for the previous ninety-day period.
Thank you, Mr. Uyoka. Uh, Commissioners, any comments, questions, or type of action?
Mr. Uyoka, I'm sure I've already asked this question, but I can't remember off the top of my head. Fully enclosed space, right?
Yes, fully enclosed airport lounge, no outdoor dining or.
Okay. How's it been going? Pretty busy, kinda slow? How's it going?
I was talking to Carlyn and they said, yeah, it's picking up and going well, so.
Guys like it? I mean, that's the main thing, right?
It's a good service.
Travelers and people for Qantas are gonna like it. That's the main thing, right?
Right. Good service, yes.
Okay, and then I think I read no prior issues with the past ones, right?
No prior issues.
Okay. I have other questions.
Okay, I move we approve agenda item six, applications number two-three dash zero-one-four-five-one dash one through, two-three dash zero-one-four-five-one dash three-zero.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Applications number two-three dash zero-one-four-five-one dash one through application number two-three dash zero-one-four-five-one dash three-zero inclusive are approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number seven, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-six from Eastside Associate LLC. Good afternoon.
Uh, good afternoon, members of the Commission. Neo Gotah appearing on behalf of Eastside Associates LLC. Appearing with me is John Adolfo, last name spelled A D O L P H O. He's the general manager. Uh, we have no changes to the investigative report. This is for a grand opening event at Eastside Bar and Grill, uh, at the Kaneo Hebei Shopping Center. It's the former Brick Oven Pizza location. We have a temporary application on the agenda today in addition to a pending permanent restaurant application.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gotah, and we will, um, take, uh, the agenda items out of order for your committee.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, questions, or type of action?
So, okay, wait. Mr. Gotah, on your floor plan, right, the stage, the things that say stage and I guess dance floor area. I guess that's all kinda tied with some of your things, but if I remember that floor space area, it goes straight back, correct? And then, so left and right, only because I was in the prior establishment, so... I'm just trying to figure out where those things are in that area. Is that past the bar or in the front portion?
Uh, that is in the front portion.
That's gonna be in the front portion.
Enclosed inside, not outdoors.
Yeah, so that's the forward area where they used to have seating and tables and stuff. Okay. 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 I have no other questions.
Okay, I move we approve agenda item number seven, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-six.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-six is approved. Thank you very much. Calling out of order, agenda item number nine, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-eight from Eastside Associate LLC.
Uh, good afternoon, members of the Commission. Neo Gotah appearing on behalf of Eastside Associates LLC. Appearing with me is John Adolfo, the general manager. Uh, we have no changes to the investigative report. We do ask if the Commission is inclined to approve this temporary application, that, that, uh, that it be effective on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
March twelfth, did you say?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments, type of action?
Sorry, one second. Okay, there's a few examples. Okay. No, I don't have any questions.
So this is, this is a temporary, um, do you know when the prior establishments close this sort of, approximate?
My understanding is it was open until recently, so it hasn't been more than a year.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I move we approve agenda item number seven, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-eight as amended to March twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
I should clarify.
Oh.
The application, the prior license might actually be active, which is, it's gonna be put in safekeeping or in status for trans- uh, change. But it's a temporary have to. So, and before we would be able to pick up the temporary, they would have to, uh, surrender if their license, correct?
Yeah, okay, that's, they would put it in safekeeping, so that they could issue the temp.
Okay.
Does that need to be in our motion then?
So I think our motion should have an effective date of March twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and on the condition that if there's an existing, uh, license, that it would be.
And it's submitted into the safekeeping, right?
So is that moved as amended and then re?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, move, um, so amended.
Okay, I second.
Okay, there's been a motion, uh, and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Uh, agenda item number nine, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-eight is approved with the, um, conditions and effective date stated in the motion.
Thank you very much.
Calling out of order, agenda item number fourteen, uh, request number two-three dash zero-one-four-seven-zero from Eastside Associates LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Neo Gotah appearing on behalf of Eastside Associates LLC. Appearing with me is John Adolfo, general manager. Uh, we have no changes to the investigative report. This is to request trial entertainment to be tied to our temporary application, given that the existing license is a standard category with no music, dancing.
So this is a one-time trial. Are you attaching it to the temporary to, um, determine whether or not you want to change the category up to permanent or?
Uh, the application we filed for permanent is, uh, uh, category two, music dancing, so the intent is to convert it to music dancing.
And this would be your trial period, determine what you're doing? Commissioners, any other questions, comments?
Do we need to state for the record that that ninety-day period would start on March eleventh or twelfth as well?
Well, that's implied, but it would help to say that, uh, that the approval would be con- terminus with the, the temp, temp effectiveness.
I, I, I can make the motion if you want.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Per number fourteen, my motion will be to approve request number two-three dash zero-one-four-seven-zero with the understanding that the ninety-day period starts on the March twelfth effective date of your temporary license. Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Request number two-three dash zero-one-four-seven-zero is approved. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would just hate to see the temporary part not starting yet and these ninety days are going.
Can we go back into our, uh, regular calendar's agenda items, uh, calling agenda item number eight, application number two-two dash two-five-zero-zero-three from New Yon, uh, J Yakidigoo Inc. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Min Youngu on behalf of New Hongje Yakidigoo Inc. On my right is the president, Yonok Moriyama.
And could you spell those names for the record, please?
Sure, so the Yonok for Y-O-N, space, O-K. And Moriyama for M-O-R-I-Y-A-M-A. And, uh, no changes to the investigative report.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments, questions, type of action?
Okay, so on the floor plan, you have two designated areas as dining areas. But is there a swinging door that connects them? Cause it looks like there's a hard wall, right, between where you have storage and then the W I C, the women's and men's restroom. But both sides of those walls say dining areas, so is there a swinging door there or is it an open space?
The swinging, yeah, it's a swinging, swimming door that contains the two dining areas.
Okay. And the second dining area, about how many tables are you looking at? Cause I see there's like a larger dining room area, which is separate. But then there's, um, um, another, our dining room that's separate and then another dining area. The other side has the seating kind of laid out. About how much more tables are you looking at having there? If you know.
But the, for the plan wise, the, right now, we see five, uh, tables.
Okay. And then you have, I know there's entrance and exit doors on that second area. Are they gonna be used as entrances as well, or are they gonna be used primarily as emergency exits?
For the emergency door.
Okay, and then the two large swinging doors, but right on Sheridan Street, that's gonna be your main entrance, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The only other comment I have is looking at some of the other, um, areas or other businesses that are associated. Yeah, there's quite a few violations here and there. Let's work to make sure those things, you know, we keep an eye on those things cause we wanna make sure you guys do good business and we're not seeing you in here for these same kind of violations, okay? That's all the questions I have.
Okay, I move we approve, uh, agenda item number eight, application number two-two dash two-five-zero-zero-three.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-two dash two-five-zero-zero-three is approved. Thank you. Moving into caterer license applications, calling agenda item number ten, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-two-seven from Zadexo America LLC.
Good afternoon, Commission. Justin Solusad appearing, authorized agent appearing for Zadexo America LLC. Nothing changed with the investigative report.
Could you just walk us through this hearing?
Yep, so this one is the revolution, yep. So, updated count, ticket count as of today was twenty-two hundred, so it's a little less than what was, that's projected. Um, I think I projected thirty-five hundred, something like that, yeah. Um, might get, it's not gonna exceed that for sure. Um, ticket sales kinda spilled out, um, but we're gonna have, based on the ticket count now, maybe three to four points of sale. Each point of sale, we have an ID checker and a security officer, liquor compliance officer. Um, we'll also have three to five roamers through the crowd to make sure that, you know, nothing's been passed around and, you know, all the, cause still everyone's banded. Everyone's banded at the point of sale. No one that doesn't, I mean, if you have a ban, you can't even go up to the front of the line. But they'll, they'll kick you out of the line. No, drinks are allowed on the way out, no hydro flask, no outside containers, none of that stuff. Thank you, yep. Oh, this is the revolution. We'll also bring in extra five to seven security guards for the, the extracurricular stuff, yeah, the smoking stuff, cause, yeah. It gets ridiculous.
And the only point of entrance, right, is the main ticket sent.
The main entrance, yep, yep. And then there's a separate smoking area off to the backside, um, if you look outside the red line, outside the, the licensed area, yeah.
Okay.
So you'll have someone at that entry point to make sure that people aren't going outside of the licensed area?
Oh, yeah, yeah, at, outs- at every point, at, yeah, there's a usher or a event security or one of my liquor compliance officers making sure that beverages don't pass.
Is there any other questions, type of action?
Nope, I don't have any more questions.
Yeah, I must have, I move we approve, uh, agenda item number ten, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-two-seven.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion, uh, carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-four-two-seven is approved. Uh, calling agenda item number eleven, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-two-eight from Zadexo America LLC.
Uh, good afternoon, Commission. Justin Solusad, authorized agent for Zadexo America. Um, no changes to the report. Update on ticket sales, pretty sad. It's only like eight hundred people. Different kind of crowd, a lot more mellow, so there won't be the five to seven people looking for the extracurricular stuff down in Frankie Valley, but, yeah.
My mom doesn't.
Similar.
Nah, you never know though. There, go again.
Similar security measures, even though it's not gonna be as much.
Yeah, yeah, for the, for the alcohol, yeah, points of sales for sure.
Yep.
Probably like two less points of sales though, yeah.
Any other questions, type of action?
No, no more questions, no more questions.
So I move we approve agenda item eleven, application number two-three dash zero-one-four-two-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-four-two-eight is approved.
Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
You too.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twelve, request number two-three dash zero-one-three-four-one from HH Pacific H L P. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Sorry, I have so many bags. So you know, O'Hara, um, for the applicant, I'm solo today. Something popped up at the hotel, so she's just dealing with that.
No problem.
Chair, um, I will make a disclosure that the ILWU does represent the employees at, um, Aloha Lani Resort. I am not the employee's direct representative, and this will not affect my ability to be impartial in deciding on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollinger. That is so noted for the record. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or type of action?
Okay, Mr. O'Hara, I have two questions, a couple. I want, I have two. Okay, so looking at your floor plan, right, on the lobby area, so you have that additional space you wanna add, correct? So with that additional space, I know, I think we had some discussion in the past, you guys wanted to do additional pop-up bars, things like that, correct?
Yes, and that's the area that's currently under the temporary expansion of premises.
Okay, so you guys are still under the same preference where you're going to do like pop-up things, or you, you guys discussed last time, like educational portions for like certain kinds of alcohol?
Yeah, so what the current redesign is, um, it's not open currently, cause they're still, you know, changing out from Christmas. The current concept is gonna be like a tequila educational experience, so it'll focus, I mean, yes, there, there will be drinking, but it's also meant to have it be a little more, um, you know, tame than your regular bar, but also try to provide some information while people drink, you know, like know where your liquor comes from, know how it's made, that sort of thing.
So I guess the big question I have is, so running it, is it gonna be open every day, or is it cer- certain days here and there? Only because my concern, right, is it's a licensed space, um, whoever's operating that space is your, your clients or the hotel will be liable. We just wanna make sure that if they're not running or they're not working, right? If something happens in there, they're liable for it.
Yes, and, and to be clear, I know we, we say pop-up, but it's all run by the hotel, so it's not like vendors are coming in. It's all hotel F and B, and like, for example, now, um, when we're changing out from Christmas, it is locked. Um, and, you know, the, the only people that are going in are like the contractors taking out the, uh, decorations and that sort of thing. And when it is open, it's fully staffed, like how we would any of our liquor outlets, so it's got security, servers, you know, manager on site, all that.
Okay. My concern was more just that, like, if it was like a traditional pop-up for an event, right? Once it's, that event is over or that season is over and it's closed, if some way, shape, or form, that door becomes unlocked, someone gets in there with liquor, it's like, you know what I'm trying to say, right? Because it's a licensed space, Aloha Lani would be liable for that licensed space. That's all I wanna make sure.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and, um, there is no liquor when it's not, uh, when it's changing over, like, for example, now, there's no liquor even stored in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, right, I mean, that's just my, guys are good, cause the whole lobby area, right, is currently in the floor plan above, right, the whole lobby area is currently where people can walk up and down with an alcoholic beverage, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I just don't want it to be where if that, you know, they're not running and somehow somebody gets in there, they're liable, okay?
Yeah, they're just like hanging out, jumping, yeah, exactly.
That's just the main thing, right, cause people could be passing to their friends, cause we're in Waikiki, right? Everybody runs around and does stuff in there, right, so. Their friends, because we're in Waikiki, right, everybody runs around and does stuff in there, right, so.
No, definitely.
That's the main thing, my main concern, I just wanna make sure it's known that. Since it's a licensed space, you're a lot. Your client or licensee is liable for it.
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, I move we approve request number two-three dash zero-one-three-four-one.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Request number two-three dash zero-one-three-four-one is approved. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Calling agenda item number thirteen, request number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-five from Seventeen A Productions LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Kornishio, authorized agent, appearing on behalf of the applicant. To my right is Angelina Khan, Angelina A N G E L I N A. Uh, Khan, K H. K H A N, she's a member manager. We received investigator, uh, supervising investigator Southland's report, have no additions and no changes there to.
So this is a temporary extension?
Right, for a period of one year. There is a pending. Application to make it.
Okay, great, that was one.
However.
That's my, that's gonna be my question.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Questions, uh, comments from commissioners, type of action?
Okay. Some questions on your floor plan. So I'm looking at the first one, right, where you have the. New deck and then you have the area one, one thousand five hundred and some feet. So when you look at your second one, I'm assuming you're taking the walkway that runs. All the way to where there's that exiting pond or exit, um, exiting, existing, existing pond, existing slab. And then the kitchen and then the restaurant on that other side, right?
Correct.
Where the barber shop's in the middle.
Correct. The, uh, walkway will not be part of the licensed premises.
Okay, well, it's all in red, just so you understand, based off the exhibit B, right?
Yeah, but I'm looking at, like, this one.
Okay, so you're saying the yellow, you're not gonna say it's licensed?
Yeah, the green area is not gonna be licensed.
Okay.
It's a general walkway.
Okay. Um, okay, so then the question I will have is, um, the extra space you're getting, how are people gonna get there? Are they gonna use your walkway or are they gonna go through the other doors? That are, because the existing pond, right, that's like an outside area, right?
This whole existing, that existing slab area as well as the courtyard. It is open air. It is basically like a. Uh, private courtyard. If you notice on the right of the existing slab, there's an entryway. That is a locked entryway that only the licensee and landlord have access to.
Okay.
The public cannot en- enter to that or exit.
So expanding the space, they're gonna come through your original floor plan and then walk through the hallway that's not gonna be licensed?
Correct.
To get to those areas, correct?
Correct. They will not be allowed to carry.
Okay.
I say alcohol through that walkway area.
Okay. Okay, so. Is there other businesses that have any type of entrance, like, I mean. Because looking at it now, it looks like it's all licensed. I'm just, you know, I mean, all the red lines show all of those spaces, right, so.
Know, knowing that the layout of that building, you know, basically that courtyard area is mainly for the restaurant. From what I've been able to, you know, what I've been able to see and witness.
So I wanna say I've been to one or two of these restaurants and I kinda understand the layout of the floor plan. I'm just trying to figure out. Technically, right, a walkway that isn't licensed that has. In there, we got people going in and out of other areas into this area, but yet on the floor plan, it's all in red, so I'm just trying to, you know what I mean?
Well, let me, let me say, it will be, will include it in the floor plan, however, alcohol will not be served, uh, correct, correct, make a correction. Alcohol will not be served in that green shaded area.
Okay.
But is it still, I, I guess my question maybe is going to your point is. Are, are the areas connected in some way? How, how would liquor go from one to the other even with a server? Would they have to exit the licensed premise and then re-enter it?
No.
Or is it?
No.
So it's, there is a connection to it?
Right, there is, I'm sorry, I, I, I stand, my sta- I stand corrected on my statement. Looking it over again, it's the entire area, but the green shaded area will not be used to serve. It'll be used for transiting.
That's.
Okay, there you go, okay. That will work for me, because I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna get liquor to and from everywhere, you know what I mean? But I get it, okay, so.
My apologies.
They're not gonna serve, but carry, people will be carrying it.
Actually, I wanted to say, you know, alcohol won't be served there, it'll be used to just to transit.
Okay.
Perfect, great.
And then the only thing I would have to add with that is, in that walkway, can we have, make sure there's someone, making sure as people are leaving their area to leave, that they're not taking something with them?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Yeah, and I don't have any other questions. Oh, yeah. I kinda have one, so are, you're looking for a year, are you guys looking, or have, do you guys have plans to make it a permanent at some point? Because you are going for a year.
We have one pending.
Okay, I just checking.
Which I just said, initially.
That, that was a question you, you anticipated.
I anticipated that.
Got you.
Yeah, and, and hopefully we'll get it within the year. Cross my fingers.
I have no other questions.
Okay, I move we approve request number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-five.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Request number two-three dash zero-one-four-six-five is approved.
Thank you, Chair, Members of Commission.
Thank you.
Commissioners, could I have a type of action for agenda item number fifteen through agenda item number twenty-three?
My motion will be for adoption of decision and order for agenda items number fifteen through twenty-three inclusive.
Second.
Uh, there's a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. Uh, agenda item number fifteen through agenda item number twenty-three inclusive are approved. Moving into adjudication hearings. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thomas Napziger, Deputy Corporation Counsel, on behalf of the city and county.
For agenda item number twenty-four, Beer Lab Hawaii, L C V two-two dash zero-one-three-four, I would have to recuse myself from this agenda item due to a potential conflict of interest. Uh, that would leave only two commissioners and that would bust quorum, so this, uh, agenda item has been, uh, continued to a future calendar date. Calling agenda item number twenty-five, Blue Ribbon Bar and Grill LLC, L C V two-two dash zero-zero-eight-six. Is there anyone here for agenda item number twenty-five?
Good afternoon, again, Chair, Members of Commission. Kornishio, authorized agent, here to assist the licensee. To my right is Pam Lee, the owner of the, of the licensee. We, uh. Waive reading of the violation stipulated to a factual basis and enter a plea of no contest.
Thank you, Mr. Nishio.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. The plea is accepted.
Mr. Napziger, your recommendations?
This violation occurred on June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, when licensee permitted liquor to be open and readily available after hours at two-fifteen A M. This is a first violation. The recommended fine is six hundred and fifty dollars, which consists of a five hundred dollar base fine and a one hundred and fifty dollar surcharge for the fifteen minutes over.
Can Mr. Nishio have any explanations?
Uh, yeah, as, as stated by Corporation Counsel, this is the first violation. Um, we're, I'm confident talking to Ms. Lee that it won't happen again. The situation was, there was in, um. A. Customer, uh, you know, a frequent customer who was very distraught over the passing of the, of the owner of the restaurant where he worked at, also a licensee. And basically he was just very, very distraught over the owner's death and, you know, he, he was talking to Ms. Lee and. The bartender, unfortunately, did not pull the, you know, the drink off the counter and that was it. It was only one individual. It is, I, I believe to be an isolated incident as the record indicates. Shouldn't, shouldn't happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Nishio.
Mr. Napziger, is there anything in the files that show if there was more than one person in the bar?
Um, according to. The investigative report, um. The investigator observed the bartender talking to two males at the bar, uh, and observed three shot glasses on the table in front of them. Uh, one shot glass was half-full and the other two were empty.
There were two individuals, Ms. Lee and the bartender.
Okay, um, Mr. Nishio, I'll make sure our client understands, right, I mean. They close at a specific time. You know, I mean, if they're gonna talk to people, kind of, it's up to them, but let's make sure there's no alcohol on the thing. Um, but it is gonna be unfortunate, because my motion will be to approve the recommended fine of six hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-five.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. A fee of six hundred and fifty dollars will be, um, assessed for agenda item number twenty-five.
Commissioner Hollinger, to you, to add to your point, yeah, I've talked to the client about that and, and, you know, based upon it, it's like, I don't think it'll happen again, well, at, at least in the next five years. But thank you very much again.
Thank you, though, I mean, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Calling agenda item number twenty-six, L C V two-two dash zero-zero-nine-one, Bolis Burritos LLC.
Uh, Commissioners, I spoke with the licensee earlier. Uh, she called our office stating that she was, uh, quite ill and she sounded very sick on the phone. Uh, she requested a continuance, uh, we gave her a continuance date of March thirtieth. We have no objection.
March thirtieth, did you say?
Correct.
Correct. Uh, Ms. Harai's March thirtieth calendar date acceptable?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, agenda item number twenty-six will then be continued to the March thirtieth calendar date. Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, L C V two-two dash zero-zero-eight-two, Club Bonita.
Commissioners, uh, this licensee, uh, is in need of a Korean interpreter. We've scheduled one for next week, so she asked that we continue it one week. Uh, we have no objection.
You, um, I don't have a calendar in front of me. Do you know what that date is?
The twenty-third, I believe.
Confirmed? Ms. Harai, is that correct and is acceptable?
It is, it's the twenty-third.
Okay. Then, agenda item number twenty-seven is continued for one week to the February twenty-third hearing. Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, L C V two-one dash zero-three-six-three, Kabuki Restaurant in Delicatessen. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. To my right is John Alphong. He is the, one of the owners of Kabuki, where the record reflect Wayne Luke is, as counsel. We waive reading of the charges and enter a plea of no contest.
Thank you, Mr. Luke.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. The plea is accepted.
Mr. Napziger, your recommendations?
This violation occurred on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee list. The list was ultimately received a little over two weeks later on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one. This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Luke, any explanation?
Yes, they had a changeover in the duties at the bar. And then, when they found out about it. You know, when they, when Mr. Alphong was found out about it, they immediately filed the, the report. And that's why it was just about two weeks late and I think they did it with all the warnings. They just, he went and found out that they were behind and it was filed.
I see that this is, um, in August of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, was there any restrictions or was the bar open or closed due to COVID?
It was open then.
The restaurant was open, yes. It was through a matter of, uh, changing personnel, management personnel in the office.
Thank you. And did you have any prior, um, instances or, or late, late filings prior to this?
No, they had, just took it over in twenty-twenty-one. Oh, twenty-nineteen, I'm excuse. This was twenty-one, yeah.
Um, I guess I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Luke, or if you can find out from your client, he has twenty-twenty-two turned in on time, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So everything is fine, okay? My motion will be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number twenty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, L C V two-two dash zero-one-one-one, Salt and Pepper Cafe. Agenda item number twenty-nine. Okay, Mr. Napziger, what would you like to do?
Uh, we would request entry of default. And, uh, I spoke with this licensee earlier. She indicated to me that she was going to change her plea to a no contest anyway.
Okay.
So a motion would be to. Imposing no-fault judgment?
Uh, motion for entry of default.
Okay.
What is your recommended fine in this matter?
Sorry.
So this violation occurred on August first, twenty-twenty-two, when licensee failed to submit its G L S report. Uh, the report was submitted at twelve oh one and fifty-seven seconds the day after it was due, so it was about two minutes late. This is licensee's second violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars. The first violation occurred on August first, twenty-nineteen, which resulted in a seven hundred dollar fine.
Yeah, sorry, what's, what's, what's the recommended fine?
Uh, this is a second violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
But the first violation is?
For these, the recommendations are based off of how late it is.
Oh, I see, I see.
Um, we get these from the auditors.
I see, I see. I thought.
Well, it must have been a lot later than two seconds for it to be seven hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I guess my motion would be to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item nineteen due to the default, default?
I think we also need a motion for entry of default judgment.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for, and my motion would be to enter a, uh, default judgment. Second.
In, in that dollar amount?
Oh, default judgment, a dollar amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-nine. I thought it was two separate things, my fault.
I think we can do them together, is that correct?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
We can do it both ways.
Yeah.
Motion, okay, for a default judgment in an amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number nineteen, twenty-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye. The motion carries, uh, an entry of defaults, uh, default will be entered and a fine of. Two hundred and fifty dollars will be assessed for agenda item number twenty-nine. Calling agenda item number thirty, L C V two-two dash zero-one-two-three, RB Sports Bar and Grill. Good afternoon.
And, uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Attorney Dean Ho appearing on behalf of Twenty-five Thirty-five Point Corp., doing business as RB Sports Bar and Grill. We're going to waive reading of the charge, enter denial, requesting contested case hearing.
Okay, this, uh, agenda item will be, um. Set for a contested hearing at the next available, uh, hearing date. Uh, we have procedures that we can, um, procedures related to the contested case hearing that we can read to you now. You'll also get, um, those mailed to you. Do you want to hear those now or?
I'm willing to just read it later.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sure everybody appreciate that.
Okay. Great, thank you then. Um, agenda item number thirty is continued for a contested case at the next available hearing date.
Thank you very much, and I'm.
Nice. Calling agenda item number thirty-one, L C V two-one dash zero-zero-three-eight, Royal Hawaiian Golf Club.
Commissioners, I received a call or an email from, uh, Attorney Keith Kyuchi. He said that he would be in trial today and would not be available. He requested a one-week continuance to the February twenty-third, uh, hearing. We have no objection.
And Ms. Harai, is that acceptable on the calendar?
Um, we, we can accommodate this, uh, uh, movement.
Okay, uh, then agenda item number thirty-one is continued for one week to the February twenty-third hearing calendar. Calling agenda item number thirty-two, The Roar by Timoras, L C V two-one dash zero-one-four-two.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission, Emmanuel Ziwakalam, here on behalf of The Roar by, uh, I'm sorry, The Roar by Timoras. Um, I waive reading of the charge. And would you like to stipulate now or after they're fussed?
Uh, Commissioners, we spoke earlier today, um, and Mr. Zabakalum, uh, agreed to, uh, stipulate to the admission of the report, uh, bait stamped P zero-one through P zero-thirty-one.
Okay, um, we see that, oh, first I'll ask, are, are the parties, uh, prepared to move forward with the contested case hearing today?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we have in our record prosecutions exhibit A. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that's correct.
Investigative report? Um, okay, and you're wanting to ac- uh, accept that into evidence?
Correct.
And no objections from you, Mr. Zabakalum?
Uh, just a clarification, in regards to exhibit A, is that, so the document that I was forwarded by, uh, Corporation Counsel has multiple exhibit letters to it. I have exhibit B, exhibit A. As well as. Sorry, just those, uh, I do have exhibit C as well, um, so I, I'm unsure as if we need to do more or if that's just all of our exhibit A.
Yeah, to clarify, that's inclu- exhibit A is inclusive of all of those, um, the documents are bait stamped P zero-one through P zero-thirty-one, which includes the initial investigative report, the supplemental report, um, and the exhibits Mr. Zabakalum just mentioned.
Okay.
Is that correct? And I agree.
Okay, great, then, um, prosecution exhibit A is accepted into. Okay, great, then, um, Prosecution Exhibit A is accepted into evidence. Um, just for confirmation, uh, from the parties, there are no witnesses as well?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then we're just moving to oral arguments, uh, can we waive the opening statements and just move directly into argument?
Sure.
Okay, then, uh, we will move directly into, um, arguments with the city going first. The prosecution.
Thank you, so this violation occurred on October first, twenty twenty, when licensee transferred its business without prior commission approval. Um, if you look at the document bait stamped P zero two one, this is a consent to assignment and assumption of lease. Um, and paragraph B on page one of the exhibit, um, in the middle, it states that the assignment effective date is October first, twenty twenty, which we submit was the date of the transfer. If you refer to P zero fourteen, which is, uh, the licensing investigator's report, um, in the middle of the page, uh, it states that according to Emmanuel Ziwakalam Venture Kakao LLC has been paying the rent due under the lease since October, um, but had not started operating business as of December ninth. Licensee will likely argue that the business had not yet been transferred because of a, uh, provision contained in the assignment regarding the landlord's consent. Uh, if you flip back to P zero two one, um, paragraph number one, landlord's consent, about eight lines down, it states that landlord's consent is subject to the Honolulu Liquor Commission approving the transfer of tenant's liquor license to a signee. They may argue that because of this provision and that the approval hadn't been given by the liquor commission, that the business was not actually transferred. Um, however, uh, our position is that the landlord's consent is irrelevant to the transfer of a business. As indicated on P zero one four, Venture Kakako started paying the rent on the effective date, which was October first, twenty twenty, uh, which demonstrates that they had taken over the day-to-day operations and control of the business. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, well, we're gonna demonstrate that there was no transfer of business, uh, or operations prior to the commission's approval. Uh, I'd like to first note that, uh, with the conversation with Tomoros, uh, they did state that according to their reporting records, service stopped March seventeenth, twenty twenty. As of that date, no alcohol was sold past that point. Uh, I think it's important to remember that this was during COVID times, um, so it was a little bit difficult, but, um, that was their stop period. On top of that, the application, uh, for the transfer went in October nineteenth, twenty twenty, you can see that in Exhibit B, uh, which I know is difficult, but it is the second page of the licensing investigative report dated February twenty-five, twenty twenty-one, under temporary license. The applicant filed temporary application, uh, number twenty-one dash twenty-two four one two on October nineteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, additionally, right below that, the temporary license was granted January seventh, twenty twenty-one, uh, and affected January eighth, twenty twenty-one. We, uh, the individual, uh, sorry, the entity that received, uh, the assignment, the consent of lease, apologies, uh, did begin their lease on October first, twenty twenty, but we believe that does constitute a transfer of business. Um, there was no business transferred, it was just the lease. And the reason that the lease was transferred was so that we could apply for a temporary license before the commission. Uh, the commission would not, won't accept a application for temporary license or for a license application without a lease. Uh, it's part of the application packet that you need to submit, uh, to actually apply for a license. Uh, so there was a stop in service, March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Uh, we see the lease gets signed, uh, in October, but it started October first. And then we see the application go in, October nineteenth, and then the temporary issued, January seventh. And this would be a normal course of transfer, in my opinion, especially with the verbiage that, uh, the Corporation Counsel said was included in the lease. So, from our perspective, there was no transfer of business before the Liquor Commission, uh, was able to review the documents. Uh, there was no sale, there was no service, there was no operations. Uh, the only thing that happened was an assignment for consent of lease, and that was so that we could facilitate submitting the application to the commission for review.
Mr. Ziwakalam, um, you state that the lease was transferred, that the business was not.
Correct.
Um, if the lease is transferred, then what happens to the license? Because the license is tied to the premises, and if the licensee no longer has the premises, what happens to the license?
So generally, it goes into safekeeping, uh, and then when we go and apply for the license, we then submit the new lease and our license would take effect, uh, when it's issued.
And was there any hearing or any documentation for that occurring?
Uh, there, not to my knowledge, except for the actual temporary application that was submitted and it reviewed. Safekeeping is primarily just turning in the license to the, to the Liquor Commission at the administrative desk.
Any other comments, questions from the commission?
So the temporary license, Mr. Ziwakalam, or temporary application, is that for a transfer of license or was that for a standing standalone license?
Correct, it was a standalone license, there was no transfer. Uh, it's an entirely new entity that's gaining the space, um, and so it went from Tomoros Enterprises to Venture Kakako LLC.
Okay, so I wasn't, I mean, I was not at any of these meetings prior for the January twenty-one, any of these things. So I guess my question would be is, is there any, I mean, when they did these licenses, where people discussed whether or not licenses were in safekeeping or what would happen with it? Because obviously, right, as we move licenses from one place to another, and we even make temporary adjustments as we go through today, right? We talk about whether or not licenses were under safekeeping or not under safekeeping. But during this time period, so no one was running any type of operation, there was no business actually running.
Correct. Uh, post-March seventeenth, twenty twenty, until the temporary license was issued, January seventh, twenty twenty-one.
And just to clarify, you said it was a standalone license, but it was part of transfer application number two-one dash two-two four one three.
Correct.
So it was styled as a transfer, just that the standalone is what comes first in that process, is that what you're trying to say, is that?
Uh, yes, because I think that you can do a standalone transfer and irregular transfer application, uh, so there's separate, uh, license applications.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
So, Mr. Ziwakalam, when they took over the license and it started in January, sorry, January seventh, correct? Did they start service that day?
It was when the license was issued, which I believe is the date after, January eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Then they started service right then and there on January eighth, twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
And at that point, there was no discussion whether or not the prior license had been canceled or not, right? Because I guess we don't know because they've already got a lease.
Well, yeah, because two licenses can occupy the same space, so when the new license takes into effect, that, it's my understanding that the old license goes away.
Okay.
And, and just as well, because the, there was no lease agreement with the old entity, I should say with Tomora Enterprises anymore, the consent had already been signed. Technically, you shouldn't have a license for a space that you're not leased for.
Questions?
I currently right now don't have any other questions.
Prosecution, do you have any rebuttal or closing argument?
Uh, I have no rebuttal, uh, I would just add for the, uh, commission's consideration that we did receive a letter on October eighteen, twenty twenty from Mr. Ziwakalam, uh, which stated, as agreed upon by both parties, no fiscal or monetary transaction was made between, uh, Tomora Enterprises and Venture Kakako, uh, for the purposes of the lease assignment. And that is on, uh, bait stamped, uh, P zero two seven, if you wanted to review that. But I have nothing additional to add.
Mr. Ziwakalam, any closing argument?
Um, the only closing argument we have is, uh, based off of the information we provided, we believe that the, uh, there was no transfer of business prior to the temporary license being executed.
Okay, this time the commission will deliberate. Okay, we are back on the record, thank you for giving us time to deliberate. Um, we will have a motion soon, we want to put a few comments, uh, on the record first. So this, uh, this contested case really revolves around, um, statutory interpretation, section two eighty-one dash forty-one, the transfer of licenses subsection H. And I'll read a portion of that, if any licensee without prior approval transfers to any other person the licensee's business for which the licensee's license was issued, either openly or under any undisclosed arrangement whereby any person other than the licensee comes into exclusive possession or control of the business. Uh, and I'll stop there, the rest of it, I don't think is applicable in this case. Um, what we have in terms of evidence, uh, is the investigative report, which includes, uh, as part of that report, uh, uh, an assignment, assumption of lease and a consent of landlord. What we don't have, uh, in the record, I don't know if it exists, but things like an asset purchase agreement, uh, somewhere where business is defined, uh, usually that's in an asset purchase agreement, we don't have that as part of our record, all we have is a consent and assignment of lease. So we, we're only left to examine that document in the context of what is the transfer of business, how are we going to define business? Um, in this case, we looked at that consent document, it has an effective date of October first, twenty twenty. Uh, we believe that the fact that it does have an effective date of twenty twenty, uh, August first, twenty twenty, and the fact that the, um, assany, uh, under that document, um, possessed as of that date, the premises occupied, the premises started paying rent. Uh, we believe that it does, uh, appear under the, the conduct and the express language of the consent document, um, that, uh, the lease and the business associated with the lease, uh, was transferred, uh, or at least the expectation and, um, language was that it was transferred as of that date. Um, so, I think those are the comments I would like to make, are there any other additional comments from the commission? And if not, uh, type of action?
Okay.
Okay, so my motion is going to be to fine the charges sustained.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, uh, the allegations are accepted.
Mr. Napzinger, your recommendations?
This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Okay. My motion will be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty-two.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second, uh, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. Um, a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number thirty-two. I'd also just like to point out for the record that under the checklist, um, for a lease, it does say a copy of the proposed lease has to be included in the application, so it doesn't say that the lease has to be signed as of the application, uh, submittal. Uh, of course, it'd have to be signed and effective as of the date you want to pick up the license, but just pointing that out for the record. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into other business, calling agenda item number thirty-three Liquor Commission, discussion re-recruitment for and or selection of the Liquor Commission Administrator. So, um, we've raised this a few weeks ago, um, and we've given it some time to, to think about, uh, uh, individually, and now it's, uh, time for us together, to come together as a commission to talk about next steps for the recruitment, uh, and selection of the next, uh, liquor administrator. Um, I believe at this time, it's probably best to start moving forward with a new, uh, recruitment process. Um, consider the, the, the recruitment process that we did and hiring process that we did as closed, uh, and start with a new process. Uh, this is my personal opinion. Um, I do think that if we are to do that, a couple of considerations, first, um, having the public, uh, more involved, asking licensees in some fashion, what do they, what do they want, uh, you know, do they want public inputs? Do they want to be able to recommend people, um, just keeping the licensee community, uh, in some way involved. Um, this is obviously an important position, and, uh, the more licensee community has some level of involvement, appropriate involvement, uh, I think that would be good input for us as we, um, continue this process. The other thing I would throw out as a, as a suggestion would be to look to using a third-party recruitment, um, agency that has, uh, experience and expertise in finding the highest, uh, quality recruits possible. Um, there's probably a cost associated with that, we would have to look into how we would budget for that in the process for getting that approved, but, um, it seems that at this point, um, a, a recruitment agency such, uh, such as that would be very beneficial for this process. Um, those are my comments, I'd open it up to the residents of the commission.
And the other one I'm not sure of, but, uh, the residency requirement, uh, also seem to limit our pool of applicants.
And I would imagine that if we were to hire a recruitment agency, they would be able to first opine on issues such as residency, whether that's, um, recommended by them or not, and that their reasoning for it, among other factors and requirements.
Yeah. So, I think with the discussions saying that the prior thing is completed, I'm not sure if applicants that were not selected or not finalized as the final two, were they notified so that they know it's completed?
Great question.
That's, that's, I don't know, so I don't know if that's something we need to do, guys that were not, like, out of the candidates we had, we had our top two, the others that were not part of the top two, if we're done with our stuff, we should make sure we notify everybody that this process is called, if you were, you were not selected, da-da-da-da-da.
Correction, and I know, Ms. Harai, you weren't, um, uh, involved with the first recruitment process, but do you happen to know whether or not, um, those applicants were notified?
I don't believe they were, to be honest, I, I don't think there was, because it, uh, this process became a little open-ended-y with, uh, sort of developments, so we, uh, I can have, uh, Ms. Reyes confirm, but I don't think, uh, a notice was sent out to these, uh, the individuals who were not selected.
So if we could, um, instruct you to confirm whether or not they were, and if they were not, to instruct, um, personnel within the commission to make those notifications?
Okay, got it.
Uh, the other, the other point I was going to make on that, uh, that I thought you might make, um, was it would be that, um, anyone who applied prior could apply again if they so, if they so desire.
Well, that was gonna be the next thing, that's why I wanted people to know they weren't, right?
You're right.
Because if you're going back out there, some guys that might have applied would be like, well, do I need to reapply? Because I applied prior, da-da-da-da-da, that was partially the, why I wasn't sure if everybody was notified or not.
Correct, and, and Ms. Harai, if I can, I guess amend the prior instruction to include in the notification that they are, um, permitted to reapply if they so choose.
Because you're starting a brand-new recruitment.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Beyond that, I think the only, the other questions I think we need to really, really look through is not only the residency, um, aspects, but what other aspects, you know, limited our ability to find people. Um, obviously, whether or not that's based off of the, um, third-party person we may be looking to inquire about using, um, and whether or not, how we address that, because, you know, there was some discussion, I think, what, uh, having a driver's license was preferred, but not needed in a sense. I think we need to have some discussion as much as we can about how much we can offer or restrict guys, like, people that could apply. Because I think that limits your number of people who want to apply. I mean, I even think, um, to some degree, having a ton of liquor experience or a ton of any other kind of experience, if you can show that you can successfully run a large group of people and focus and motivate that group and stay open to the public and things like that, if you can show those things, to me, some of that qualifies for being in a job where that's really what you're doing. You're running a group of people and using your, so, people that are in charge of those departments to make sure they're doing their jobs. So, those types of things, I think, should be discussed as well with whatever, however agency or what we determine to do.
So, if I'm hearing the commission, um, correctly, do we want to explore and retain, um, a third-party agency to assist in this process, or?
Yes. Yes, I think we should, based off the fact that the limited number of applicants that were applied locally. Yes.
Because it doesn't make sense to use the same process if that's where we ended up. So I, I would definitely agree. And then in terms of the minimum qualifications, if some of them are limiting, like residency or driving or any of the others that may not be that germane, um, we can, we should revisit it.
Um, revisits as a commission or re- revisit with the third-party agency as, um, as, as counsel to that type of recruitment process?
Well, I do know that some of the requirements, my best understanding, is part of the hiring process. I don't, I don't wanna say Corporation Counsel, but I know there was some discussion on like what you can and cannot put on this. I think part of the third-party group would have to have some discussion with us, as well as whoever the hiring party people are, so that we can have a discussion on how you determine what those minimum requirements can be, should be, have to be. So.
Okay, so is there instruction to administration with respect to the third-party recruitment thing? You need to be fairly specific. Do you want, I mean, I'm not gonna put words in your mouth. You need to tell us what you want us to do. You don't have to do it like right now.
Okay, good.
You don't have to do it right now, but we, we, it's not like we're gonna like, oh, it sound, kinda sounds like they want us to do that, so we'll do that. So you have to be very specific with that instruction.
Um, Ms. Rai, and also Corporate Counsel, if you have any suggestions. You say we don't have to do that now. Is that something we have to do on the record, or we can do in writing internally?
Well, you have to do it on, at a meeting.
Okay.
One, and two, you need to, um, we, you have to determine whether or not it has to go through procurement process, um, like what the funding is gonna be, and what the process is for hiring third-party. So, and that you don't know right now, so.
Right, and I would imagine the instruction to the administration would be to research and provide, um, recommendations and advice on those issues.
Yeah, I mean, you are, you're, you guys are under B F S, right? So you guys would have to talk to B F S and D H R, which is what was done before, to see how you guys can go through the process. I mean, and that's just my layman's understanding. This isn't legal, so I explain.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, so if that's, if you wanna start with an instruction there, or you guys can give it at a next meeting?
Well, I, I, so because it's on here, I mean, I would ask the fellow, um, my fellow commissioners if we should maybe make a motion to at least have administration contact. I'm very glad that happens.
I don't know that you need a, I don't think this is, I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but I'm trying to prevent you from taking a vote when you don't need to.
Yeah, right.
As opposed to just instructing me, can you do the, can, can you do some preliminary research regarding the procurement, uh, acquisition of these, uh, which could include me contacting neighbor island guys, but don't vote, don't vote on it. I, I would say you don't need to vote on it. You can just, you can just give me an instruction. I just ask for specificity is all, as opposed to, you know, okay?
Well, I guess then I will, if it's all right, I'll make the instruction, if you can contact the parties you need to about getting a third-party individual involved, and what we need to do to possibly procure that. Would that work?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we wanna go into executive session to continue the discussion?
Um, I think if, if the instruction is simply for the administration to, um, go find out how this process would work and to report back to us, I don't know if we necessarily need to go into executive session unless you feel it's needed.
Yeah, I, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of consulting with the board's attorney on questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities.
So.
So you go?
Okay, I second, I second.
His promotion and a second. Any objections or reservations here and seeing none? Uh, I also vote aye. Motion carries. We are now in executive session.
He's got snacks.
Okay, we are back on the record. Um, we've already provided some instructions to Ms. Rai and to the administration. Do we need any further instruction, uh, or amendment of our instruction? I believe that.
No, I don't need some.
Okay, well then the instru-
You.
I like.
Then, Ms. Rai, you have your instruction. You understand the instruction?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, for agenda item number thirty-four, we've already moved into executive session, so that's no longer necessary. So unless there's anything, is there any other business? Oh, I'm sorry, there's, ah, there's a new page. So we'll move into agenda item-
Yeah, the deal will be fast.
So we'll move into agenda item number thirty-five, Liquor Administrator Legislative Update.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that tomorrow is, uh, the first, uh, first lateral deadline, and the three bills that we're watching the most closely, which is sixteen, seventeen, one fifty-nine, how, all House bills have met that, have met that deadline, so yay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rai. Anything else on legislative update?
No.
Thank you. Okay, calling agenda item number thirty-six, Liquor Administrator Administrator Matters. Ms. Rai?
Um, earlier I did circulate, uh, my usual weekly report. I just wanted to update one item with respect to the motion to dismiss that, uh, uh, Council Smith filed, uh, with, with respect to the state action. That motion to dismiss was granted.
Thank you, Ms. Rai. Okay, with that, um, session is adjourned.
Okay, that?
Yeah, yeah.
I have gotta get used to checking to emails. Not there yet.
Oh, no, you can just forward.
Oh, no.